Can we please get a roll call?
Commissioner Donaldson.
Here.
Commissioner Hidalgo.
Here.
Commissioner Keller.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson has an excused absence this evening. Commissioner Young.
Here.
Vice Chair Herrero.
Here.
And Chair Barrera.
Here.
We have a quorum of six commissioners present.
Okay, moving on, we have next on the agenda, public comment. This is a time for anybody that wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda tonight. So if anybody would like to speak, please approach. Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to the approval of action minutes of March 28th, 2019. Are there any corrections?
I must abstain, I wasn't here.
Okay. Can we get a motion?
Move approval. Okay, moved by Vice Chair Herrero and seconded by Commissioner Young. This is without exception, I assume, and so that'll be five eyes, one absent, and one abstention.
Correct. All right, next is the Community Development's Director's Report.
Thank you. First, with regard to recent City Council actions, the City Council has had two meetings since your last meeting. Those City Council meetings were on April 2nd and April 16th. On April 2nd, the Mayor presented Housing Coordinator Kathryn Firpo with a proclamation upon her retirement honoring her eight years of continuous and outstanding service to the city of Emeryville. And the Council approved a letter of support to the Oakland City Planning Commission for the Emery Go-Rounds application for a conditional use permit for a shuttle yard under the MacArthur Maze along Mandela Parkway. And I'm pleased to report that the following day, on April 3rd, the Oakland City Planning Commission unanimously approved the conditional use permit. On April 16th, the Council approved a request for a noise waiver at the Emery Tech Building on 65th Street for a Saturday crane lift to replace 18 air conditioning units on the roof on any single Saturday between April 27th and May 18th. The Council had previously considered this request at their March 19th meeting but continued the item because the applicant had advised that the requested date for the noise waiver had changed. I understand it's now scheduled for next Saturday, April 27th. The Council approved the annual increase in the development impact fees, which includes the transportation facility impact fee, the parks and recreation facility impact fee, and the affordable housing impact fee. This increase is based on the annual increase in the construction cost index for San Francisco as published by Engineering News Record. This year's increase was only 0.28 percent, just slightly more than one quarter of 1%. It will take effect on July 1st and will be effective for fiscal year 2019-2020, which runs through June 30th of 2020. Finally, the Council approved a parking and construction license for the Sherwin-Williams Mixed Use Project. In other news, as I previously announced, was going to happen, now has happened, Caltrans hosted a community meeting about their MacArthur Maze vertical clearance project on Wednesday, April 10th, at ECCL. And at that meeting, they announced that the project has been put on pause, as they called it, to allow for further environmental evaluation. So stay tuned on that one. Bike-to-work day is on Thursday, May 9th. As usual, we are planning a short community ride starting at 8:00 a.m. in front of City Hall, and I hope to see you all there with your bicycles. There will be a community workshop on the 40th and San Pablo Transit Hub on the final design concept for the 40th and Pablo Transit Hub on Wednesday, May 22nd. That's the day before your next commission meeting, starting at 5:30 p.m. here in the council chambers. Finally, I hope you all enjoyed yourself at the APA conference, and you will have an opportunity to discuss it at the end of tonight's meeting under Planning Commissioner Comments. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Okay, thank you, Charlie. Any question?
Yeah, Charlie, I have a question on the vertical clearance project and the Emery Go-Round agreement. So how has that affected the agreement to use that space with the vertical clearance project with Caltrans?
My understanding is that Caltrans and the Emery Go-Round are moving forward with a lease agreement for Emery Go-Round to be able to lease that space under the maze. I believe that is a separate section of Caltrans than the section that is working on the MacArthur Maze project. One of the alternatives for the MacArthur Maze project would, I don't know if it would actually preclude there being a bus yard there, but it would preclude it for quite a while because it would be torn up. We did write a comment letter to Caltrans, and we urged them in that comment letter to abandon that particular alternative. It remains to be seen whether they will or not. Our hope is that during this pause, that when they come back from their pause, that they will have eliminated that alternative. But meanwhile, my understanding is now that they have their conditional use permit in hand from the city of Oakland, that Emery Go-Round is going to go full steam ahead, get their lease from Caltrans, make their improvements to the bus yard, and move in.
Do we know how long the lease is?
No.
Okay. My concern is we're going to move the yard there.
Let me interrupt right here. We need to cut this off because it's not on the agenda. And it could be within the purview of the Planning Commission at some future point.
All right, any other questions? Nope. All right, let's move on. We've got two public hearings tonight, and I would like to move Item 7.2 up to be heard first. It's the duplex conversion. The other Item 7.1 is a recons- a reconsideration that the City Council sent back to the Planning Commission, and the structure will be a little different for that. So I would like to move the duplex conversion up first. Is there any objections to that?
I don't have an objection, but did you want to do Item 6, the disclosure of conflicts of interest?
Oh, yes, sorry, thank you, yes. Let's back up. Disclosure of conflicts of interest and ex parte communications.
I'd like to disclose I met with Mark Stephan a few days ago regarding this project at Emeryville Public Markets personally.
Okay, all right. I have an add in.
I also met with the applicant for the public market. I have none.
None, all right, thank you. Okay, so is everybody okay with moving the duplex up first? Okay, so it is a consideration of a conditional use permit and design review application to modify an existing single-unit building into two units. So we'll get a presentation from staff.
What I just set up on the dais there was the revised materials board that the applicant has provided for your review. Tonight, we'll be discussing 1291 55th Street, as Chair Barrera mentioned. So the site location is on 55th Street, highlighted there in red. So for project overview, to refresh your memory, it's modifying an existing single-unit residential building into a two-unit residential building, adding about 518 square feet or so. It's reducing the height of the existing buildings to comply with the 30-foot maximum height of the district. It's demolishing an existing detached garage, and all parking will be located at the rear of the property. So on February 28th, you may recall that this came before you. At that time, there were no speakers during public comment. The Commission provided general feedback on the aesthetics, different perspectives on that, and provided recommendations regarding the bike parking, providing additional plants in the front yard, wanting more building details like gutters and downspouts from the applicant, providing interior perspectives, as was a crest of yours, and providing more information on the polycarbonate window on the west facade, and providing local examples of buildings with similar designs. The applicant has addressed all of those, and we'll be going over them during the presentation. So here are some images of the existing building, and the existing site plan and the proposed site plan. The existing building here, as you can see, is being reduced in height a little bit, and materials are being changed. And the mouse is working, so that's good news. Okay, so for context here, we have the proposed elevations along 55th Street, and you can see that it's on the edge of a residential zone to the left side there, to the east, and to the west, more commercial zone with some industrial buildings as well. The existing setback will be very similar, I mean, the proposed will be very similar to the existing, and a trash enclosure is proposed within the front setback. That requires a conditional use permit, which, no different findings from the other conditions that you need to approve tonight. Not conditional use permit, sorry, findings, findings, let's try that again, I apologize. So here's the proposed cross-section with 55th Street towards the right side of your screen, and the two units, how they relate to each other with Unit 1 on top in the middle with the entrance from the front of the property, and the rear unit, Unit 2, entrance in the back. And here's the site plan, or pardon me, the floor plans for those. So you can see the basement, the main floor, and the top floor. The proposed basement unit has five bedrooms, and main entry is off-street with open space and a rear patio. The common spaces for both units are on the middle floor. And then the top floor has four bedrooms with open space and a west-facing deck. So the proposed west elevation, here's a drawing, we'll see color renderings in a few moments, has a large window feature where the stairways for both units are located. Proposed east elevation facing the other residential unit next to it. This is the south elevation facing the rear, and you can see there's a slightly sunken patio in the back there, and the main entrance up, flight of stairs. And then the front of the building facing 55th Street. So here's a rendering from 55th Street, and then also from 55th Street but from the driveway side of the building. And there's the window feature we discussed a few moments ago. And then revised rendering based on your questions about the opacity of that. And the interior perspectives that you requested. This one is for the Unit 1, showing the living and kitchen areas. And this shows stair shots for both units, they're very similar for both of them. And then Unit 2, living and kitchen area, interior perspectives. So there, we had the street trees assessed. Unfortunately, because of the timing of the review of that, we were not able to notice this for street tree removal as a proposal. So what was found from that by the arborists is that one of the trees is not suitable for retention due to a large stem breakout from past pruning, and the other tree is in marginal structural condition due to inappropriate early structural pruning. Though it is recommended that both trees be replaced, one can be retained. If retained, the tree will require protection and a higher level of maintenance in future years and a limited safe and useful life expectancy. So tree removal permits require commission approval, so that would have to come back to you at a later time. As I mentioned, the legal notice did not include consideration of a tree removal permit because of the timing of getting the trees assessed. And staff does seek your direction tonight on whether to keep the trees, to remove one, or remove both, what you would recommend moving forward with this project. So for the general plan, the land use classification is medium-density residential, is actually not an area of stability, that is an incorrect comment right there. Oh, wait, it is an area of stability, I'm sorry. It is an area of stability, it's not in the North Hollis overlay, I apologize. So here is the medium-density zone for the general plan, and you can see the project is right there in a little circle at the bottom. So the zoning district is medium-density residential, where two-unit residential units are permitted use, and there's no overlay district here. For zoning, the FAR is over base, the residential density is consistent, and the building height is consistent with base zoning. So the required findings for exceeding the base here are not bonus points, but rather neighborhood compatibility and design minimizing the appearance of driveways. So speaking of that, off-street particular parking is all in the back. There's two spaces, one for each unit, although the minimum is just one space. And bicycle parking, applicant is proposing one space per bedroom plus one guest space. So here are the parking plans that were slightly revised per your suggestions. There was not a lot of space, a lot of wiggle room because of the width of the property to provide more space for the bike parking in relationship to the auto parking. So what the applicant did was provide sliding doors for the bike parking to try and make it as easy to access as possible. So for setbacks, open space and landscaping, one of the comments was to provide more plantings in the front, which the applicant has done. All required setbacks are met, and two-unit residential projects are exempt from open space requirements, but both units do have private open space in the form of patios or decks. And 10% of the lot area must be landscaped, and this project exceeds that. So here's the revised landscaping plan. You can see over here on the right side, there's more plants in the front as requested. And applicant has also added some planter areas along the side of the property that still allows for circulation along the edge of the property for pathways for access. So for findings, the conditional use permit findings are consistent with the general plan. The character and design of the proposed use are compatible with the neighborhood, and the proposed use is compatibility with utilities and emergency response systems. The proposed use also contributes to general well-being of the community and complies with the planning regulations. For the development bonus for RM, the findings, as we talked about, are not for bonus points, but for the project being compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, and the proposed project being designed to minimize off-street appearance of parking, or on-street appearance of other. For major design review findings, the design of the project is consistent with the general plan, and the design of the project conforms to the Emeryville Design Guidelines for parking and access, site planning, the eastern residential neighborhoods, the residential unit design. And the project is of high design quality that is compatible with and will not adversely affect the surrounding area. So staff's recommendation is to approve the project, and we'd also like your feedback on the trees, as I mentioned earlier. The applicant also has a presentation for you tonight.
Does anybody have any questions for staff before we let the applicant come up? Okay, come on up, applicant.
I actually do have a couple of questions.
Okay.
One of them is regarding the trash for two units with nine, total of nine bedrooms. Has it been looked at that three bins are enough?
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. Yes, that was brought up, and it was slightly enlarged, so the measurements are, it actually didn't change that much. I think just a couple of inches, is that correct?
Yes, and it's 96-gallon trash bins and recycling and compost for both units.
Marcy Greenhut and our Public Works Department reviewed that with the applicant and made sure it was adequate.
Okay, and in looking at the stormwater, does the street right-of-way, the sidewalk stormwater get calculated into the overall? It looks like it is.
Are you talking about the landscaping, or when you say the stormwater?
The willow plant, the water, the...
The willow?
The willow, yeah.
Yeah, in terms of plantings and everything, yes.
In terms of percentages of coverage and all that?
So for the willow requirement, it's under 2,500 square feet, so it's like pretty minimal requirements that need to meet low-water-use plants and mulching guidelines and tree planting guidelines. In terms of landscaping requirements, they're only required to plant 10% of the project site, which is well exceeded. Is that, I'm not sure I'm answering your question, though.
Are you asking whether the willow only considers the site and...
And not the street, not the sidewalk, yeah.
So does the, does the willow calculation only consider the site? Or does it take the planting strip on the sidewalk into consideration as well?
They weren't required to do a willow calculation for this one because it's small. They were only required to make sure that the plants complied.
Okay, thank you. It was below the threshold to do all the willow documentation?
Correct. They don't have, so we have a threshold for willow small and willow large, and willow large is only for things that you will rarely see, because our lots are so small. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Hello again. My name's Ryan, I work for Behrins Studio, and I'll be representing the project right here. Navar did a wonderful job of walking you through the project, so I'll probably go through this in a efficient manner for you. As you can see right now, this is the front of the project for the conversion. Let's see here, I'll just kind of walk through. This is a, right now is just an example of where it's currently at. I just wanted to show that again. And then what I, what you're looking at right here is just kind of the neighborhood context, and this is kind of the more commercial side of it. Then the next one showing what's typical in the neighborhood for residential. And these are similar views that Navar has already shown, so I'll just go through them. Right here, what's showing is the yellow box, the circulation box for both units, and what I'm going to be showing in the next slide, is an example of how that is used in another Right there. So as you can see, you can see kind of an evening shot, a day shot, and then through the interior, how that looks. So it's not a transparent, it's more of a, like, slight opaque, or, yeah. So you get the light in there, but you don't necessarily, you know, see through, there's a sense of privacy. This is just kind of a continuation wrapping around, showing the rear unit. Sorry about that, the mouse is a little sensitive. And then what I'm showing right here is example projects that are within the area that we're in. This is in Dogtown, and this is a project on Louise Street that we did about two years ago. And it's just kind of showing what we do at Behrins Studio. And what I'm doing right here, because there was a conversation about how the units are small, and then the bedrooms were small too, but this is just to show how we usually design for projects like this. And that's with dealing with double-height spaces, a lot of windows, and then wherever there's like small nooks and crannies, we make sure they're usable for like transitional spaces between bedrooms, living rooms, dining rooms, wherever possible in the design. And this is another one that's just right on 43rd Street and Elmo K. And this one was just finished about 70 months ago. So what you're seeing is a street view, and then also kind of a circulation path, and what is like the main double-height living area. It's kind of an example of what we're doing with, in this project too. So right here is the Unit 1, and the first image that you're seeing is from the entry, looking into the kitchen, and also dining and circulation, and then the one below that is on the other corner of it. And then it's just kind of wrapping around, so what it's showing is the procession that is going to go up to the second level. And the next image does show that right there. So this is where you see we play with like the double-height space, you know, little nooks for like a small office before you go to a bedroom or office. And this is typically what we try to do up here in studio again. This one right here is for the second unit and for the common space. Though small, you can see how we're playing with as much windows as possible, and if you look on the second image to your left, down, that is clear-story windows, like if there's any, like, between the property next to us. So there's a sense of privacy too. So we take that in consideration. And then on the bottom right, you'll see that that image does show like the bay window circulation right there too. So it's, again, just really trying to like not make, not make the spaces feel small, but as large as possible with the square footage that we're giving. And this is also a continuation of that, going from that level up to the top level for Unit 2. So you see how the windows are designed to allow it to feel open as much as possible. And that's it. If there's any questions, please ask.
Okay, any questions?
I have a question, but it's going to be for Navar. On the tree report that was provided, it mentions that tree number one potentially would have a limited safe and useful life expectancy. What were we talking in terms of overall impact in the tree's lifetime? Was there like a half reduction, or any sort of specificity on that?
I am definitely not an expert on that. Also, what you have before you is a draft report because of timeline. But, you know, the arborist made it clear to me in verbal conversation that it, the tree was compromised, essentially.
I actually have a tree-related question. Do you know how the trees get disposed of, the unhealthy trees? Like what happens to them once they get taken off-site?
Like if they become mulched or something like that? Great question, but I imagine it's probably mulching or something to that effect that's efficient, but I don't actually have information on that.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
I have one to the applicant related on that subject. How do you guys feel about replacing the trees?
Well, if required, definitely I will have to do it. So, I mean, I don't see a problem with that, that's understood.
So do you think overall will be a benefit to the project to have newer, healthier trees rather than a compromised tree?
I would, I would think so, yeah.
Okay.
And Navar and I've had a conversation about that, too.
I just had a couple of questions. I really liked how you guys were detailing the additional downspouts and the gutter systems you put in. Actually finishes the look of the roof compared to the last time I looked at it. One question I have is, in the, in that window, the large one that faces out into the parking lot, so one thing that I think would be kind of important that I, in terms of neighbors who might be in the future there, is that that window would never have to face being screened in any way, or any kind of drapes that blackout screens in front of it might actually change the look of it. So if that's something that, it's a large area, it's not just a couple of windows, it's two floors, and it's, you know, whatever height it is. And that, just make it important here, you know, that that's something that...
So, if I may, this is just time to ask clarifying questions.
Okay.
Questions about maybe modifications to the project would be appropriate for after the public hearing has closed.
Of course, thank you.
Is there a way for you to turn that into a question? Did you have a question about that big window, or?
Yeah, so, yeah, can you, can you describe it a little bit more then on how you...
Well, on the outside, it does look like a big window, but in reality, in the interior, like the center of it splits the units, and then it is the landing area, but for the circulation of the stairs for both of the units. So in reality, like when you're inside, there are smaller picture frame windows. And if I show, you could kind of see it right here in that image right there, and then if I go to...
There.
Right. This is an example of what you see in one of the units, which is the first one, if you look in at the top-right image. So it's definitely smaller, and in the interior, definitely it's smaller. So did that kind of answer your question?
It does, kind of, but, you know, you'll, you'll get the idea.
Yeah, I do. And then if you also look at the right lower corner, you will see on the second unit, that's what that looks right there, or the window looks right there.
And then there's only one that's in a bedroom that would need privacy.
Yeah, and there's only one, that's correct, Travis has mentioned, there's only one that would need privacy, and that would be the bedroom unit, which is right on the right upper-right corner.
Oh, okay.
Do we have any other questions for the applicant or staff? All right, so if we have no more questions, then I will open up the public hearing for comments. So if there's anybody here that wishes to speak on this item, please approach the microphone. Nope, seeing none. All right, I will close the public hearing and open it up for deliberation, so would you like to start us off?
Well, it's, it's, I think it's a nice look. I think it has, I think it'll do a lot of things to the neighborhood, and I think I said that the last time, it's something refreshing a little bit. But that, that, that large translucent glass kind of, you know, it's kind of, it could be kind of ominous. I don't think you get as much vision as you're seeing on this screen here. I don't think you'll be able to see through it that much.
No.
So they'll be by... So it'll be by half of that or maybe less.
That's correct, and that's what's just for presentation.
For presentation, right.
You could kind of see it. The example project right here does show a pretty good example of how it will look.
So, you know, just the concern, you know, if someone's walking around and, you know, someone would be able to tell what someone might be, what they might look like or count the number of people. So there's a, there is a sense of privacy that you are giving up for, for something that open. I'm just stating that.
Yeah.
It's not as, not as hidden as one would think it would be.
That's correct. The clients that are living in there, I think they'll be all right with people counting them, you know, how many times they walk up and down those stairs.
They have been involved in the conversation with you in designing the project, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Well, then I'm also thinking from the other side, for people having to look at it from the other side.
That is true. And I, but I do imagine, since it is, you know, a parking lot, and it's not going directly next to a residential, there might not be an issue, but I stand to be corrected.
I just look into it. Good design though.
I appreciate your comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Y'all, would you like to go next?
I don't really have any significant comments. I think it's an interesting, and it'll be a different addition to the neighborhood. And the scale and the massing is probably not, is not that much difference than what's there now, so.
Okay.
Ryan, I want to thank you for coming back and being so thorough with all your, the information you provided for us, based on our feedback, so thank you for that. I see this building as a dramatic improvement from the unsightly building that's been there vacant for several years, so really looking forward to seeing this move forward. I believe it's consistent with the general plan and the neighborhood. Thank you.
I really don't have any further comments on the actual building itself and its sounds, based upon the arborist report. And staff asked us to chime in on that, that both trees do indeed need to be replaced. While I generally like to retain a tree if possible if it's been compromised, there's simply not a choice in terms of safety.
And I want to echo the appreciation. You guys did a good job answering our questions and fulfilling what we saw as the needs for the project. I've been in a building right on Lowell Street near your offices, that really big Corten Steel, and they use this extensively also on Adeline Street. I've been inside the structure during the day. It affords a lot of light, and it's not going to be a privacy issue. It really is, it's fine. And I think because it's overlooking a parking lot from the inside at night when it's illuminated, no one's going to be in that parking lot, the businesses are closed. I don't see that parking lot ever going away and being developed because it's part of the Pickle Works. Pickle Works is a Tier One building, so I don't think we're ever going to be changing that part of the neighborhood. So I think this is a really good addition to the neighborhood. I think it's a way to do something dramatic without shocking the neighborhood because it's kind of off to the side. So I think it was really good placement of that window. So I, I think the project is, and to put a really family house in this neighborhood, five bedrooms, four bedrooms, is just amazing, and that it's going to be owner occupied and not rental is just a big, big feather in your cap on this. And regarding the trees, I went by the property on Saturday, they're pretty compromised there. I also feel the same that mature trees, we need to really save those. I'm glad we did that with the Chinese elms in the Paper Mill Project or the Powell Park on Powell Park. I think we did a good job in saving those trees. These trees aren't really worthy of saving. And I, I think what we can do with engineered soils and planting the proper trees for the proper area, I think, and, you know, I'm looking at the trees that we put in the park across the street from me at Christie Park, and they are really taking off. And it's, it's really nice when you put, you know, a proper soil. And so I'm, my recommendation would be that we look at replacing both those trees. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also wanted to comment on the trees, I forgot to do that. I agree with my fellow commissioners. I, in terms of the draft that we received from the arborist, it looks as though both trees would be ideal to replace, and also would help complement the design that you have in the front. So I would be interested in pursuing that as well.
Commissioner Donaldson, would you like to give your direction on the trees? I forgot to ask you two about that.
I think if we have a couple of new, good-sized, properly planted trees, that they'll do well, and they'll look a lot better than what's there now.
And I think the, doing in the pair trees, having that, there's something about Victorian houses is that they're extremely symmetrical, and so you'll be kind of retaining that symmetrical look, which I think that'd be very, very fun to have. And both trees would be identical, and it would just look better, go with the house a lot better.
My direction on the trees is also to remove both, given that, you know, the healthier tree will be compromised if the other one is removed. And I also want to thank you for, you know, adjusting the project and bringing us some examples of that material. You know, I appreciate your courage to be bold on this material. I'll be interested to see how it looks, and, you know, maybe you will prove everybody wrong or right in that, you know, this, this would be something interesting and kind of fun to look at out there. And I like your approach to kind of modernizing this traditional residential form, so I think this is going to be a really nice addition to the neighborhood if it gets approved. And I feel like we can make the findings for this project. So with that said, if there is no more, any more comments, would you like, no?
No comments.
No more comments, okay. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'd like to move approval.
I would second that. Oh, right, okay, sorry, I was distracted by another topic. Commissioner Donaldson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hidalgo.
Aye.
Commissioner Keller.
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson is excused. Commissioner Young.
Aye.
Vice Chair Herrera.
Aye.
And Chair Barrera.
Aye.
Six ayes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the City Council within fifteen days.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, and thanks for your time.
You're welcome. Don't forget your design board.
Oh, yes. Okay, thank you. All right, we will move on to our next item, which is a reconsideration of the Marketplace Redevelopment Project Parcel B. This was reconsider, or remand that the City Council sent back to the Planning Commission for the project that, which was appealed to the City Council. So can we get a presentation from staff, please?
Good evening, Planning Commission. I'm going to take a few minutes to kind of explain how we are here today, and this is a really different kind of a hearing. So in January of this year, the Commission approved a project for parcel, Marketplace Parcel B. This decision was appealed by Verhame Corporation. And when a project gets appealed to the City Council, the Council can do one of three things. A, it can reject the appeal and affirm the Planning Commission's decision, or they can accept the appeal and set a date for a public hearing to hear the appeal. Or three, they can remand the matter back to the Planning Commission for the Commission to reconsider the project. So in this case, it's number three that has occurred. The City Council considered the appeal and remanded the matter back to the Commission for Commission's consideration. They also specified that the Commission reconsidered the project limited to the items and issues outlined in the appeal letter. So that's what I will be focusing on, on the appeal letter and the staff response to that. So just because of the peculiarity of this hearing, the City Attorney's Office and the Chair of the Commission came up with this procedure to, so that every, all parties kind of know this ahead of town, in terms of how much time they will be given and in what order. So I will be starting off with the presentation. This will be followed by applicant's presentation, limited to ten minutes. This will then be followed by Verhame, they will also be given ten minutes. Then it would be open to public, and there'll be three minutes per speaker. And after all public comments have been taken in, the applicant will have time to respond, limited to five minutes. And after that, the Commission can deliberate and ask questions to the applicant and/or to the appellant. And of course, after that, there is the Commission vote. So just to get us back, we are talking about Marketplace Parcel B, railroad tracks on the top of the screen. In terms of the project itself, no changes are being proposed. So if you remember in January, what was happening was that the applicant were requesting that the earlier approval of 2016, which consisted only of ground flow retail and parking, that that be rescinded, and they applied for a revised proposal for Parcel B, which included office space. That was the big change, in addition to ground flow retail and, of course, parking. So the building is an eight-story building, one hundred and thirteen feet tall, and it includes the following uses. Again, nothing has changed from the January approval, and this is kind of one of the graphics at the January approval. So going straight to the issues in the appeal letter, the appeal letter essentially talks about mitigation measures of coming out of the EIR that was prepared for this project, as well as one tower separation ordinance that it talks about. So the first one, so this in italics is directly taken from the appeal letter, and then I'll be just verbally responding or rebutting their item. So the first one is AES one is how the mitigation measures are kind of numbered, so AES means aesthetics. So the requirement that, that calls for the final designs to create a vital streetscape that enhances the pedestrian experience over its blank walls or box-like forms. The original 2008 approval indeed included large buildings along the railroad tracks. However, in the original approval, they have varying and modulated heights and facade with several important openings and livable gaps between different, different buildings. Sorry, that's an error. So in response to this, the first things that need to be very clear is that the buildings along the railroad track are Parcel A and Parcel B. And the original approvals at the PDP level for Parcel A was a much larger and taller project. The PUD height was one hundred and seventy-five feet, where the actual Parcel A FTP height that was approved by the Commission a few years ago was much lower, eighty-six feet at the northern end and fifty feet at the southern end. This was mainly to accommodate the terraces, terraces project across the, across the railroad tracks. Parcel B, PUD approved height was one hundred and twenty feet, and what they are proposing now is one hundred and twelve feet. So just to look at, this is the approved PUD PDP, and you have the tracks here, and what we are talking about is this line of buildings. This is Parcel A, and the way to identify Parcel A is that the pedestrian bridge goes through the building, and then this is what we are calling Parcel B. So this is kind of the eleva, the rendering of how the approved PUD PDP was conceived at the time of its approval. And this is the figure that has been taken by staff from the applicant's sheets and design packet, and it kind of tells you, so again, just to orient yourself, we are looking west and looking at the 2008 PDP and the, and the various FTPs that have been approved. So you can kind of see the difference between the two. And again, these are some massing studies from different directions, the west and the southeast in this case, and you can kind of see on the top the original 2008 PDP, and this is the various FTPs, including the current proposal for Parcel B. The second issue that the appeal letter talks about is that it states that there is a requirement which calls for a wind study to review the winds that will exist on the pedestrian bridge. No such wind study was presented. It certainly seems that the current design with the only, with only the narrowest gaps between buildings will create a wind tunnel here, and that those conditions deserve extra study. Now, this mitigation measure is directed at the pedestrian bridge connection over the railroad and calls for a wind analysis to ensure that the roof areas that would be used by site patrons and residents would be designed such that the wind acceleration would be reduced to less than significant levels. Now, just to remind again, this is the A building, and this is the B site. The pedestrian bridge is through Building A, it's not anywhere close to Parcel B. And there are no, and there are no proposed, sorry, there are no proposed roof areas on Parcel B either. The environmental document that has been prepared does note that the project had, has the potential to increase ground level winds, and to address this, wind analysis has been submitted by the applicant that concludes that based on the exposure, massing, and orientation of the building, that it would not have the potential to adversely affect ground level winds near its base in any direction around the building. The third thing is that the wind one also specifically asks that any final design should avoid narrow gaps between the buildings where winds would be accelerated, and the current design does exactly the opposite. The prior design approved for Parcel B has roughly one hundred and seventy-foot gap between it and the approved Parcel A. So what here the appellant is referring to is the proposal that the Commission approved in 2016 for Parcel B, which had no office use, and it was a smaller building, and there was a greater gap. However, in order for the Commission to approve a FTP, it needs to find that it is consistent with a PUD PDP and not a priorly approved FTP. There can be a number of FTPs that can be consistent with the PUD PDP, and in order to approve a FTP, the findings are that it needs to be consistent with the PUD PDP. So as I was mentioning, this in terms of the gaps, the gap on the top is about seventy-six feet. Again, this was not called out. In the 2008 PDP, this is something that the applicant's architect kind of figured out from scaling it. And then, and the gap between these two buildings being proposed is sixty-eight, so there's a rough difference of about eight feet. And again, like I mentioned, the heights of buildings are prescribed, but vertical, the vertical, different, vertical, the horizontal distances between different buildings have not been prescribed by the PUD. So there is a difference of eight feet, where we, the staff believes that this falls under substantial conformance. The fourth appeal item is that the traffic mitigation measure states that the applicant should submit a transportation demand management plan to the city for review and approval prior to completion of the FTP. This did not occur, as far as we can tell. Traffic timing and impacts of post-office use are very different than that of those of retail. So for the first, there's a difference between what a TDM and a traffic analysis is. A traffic analysis kind of looks at the proposed users and figures out how much traffic there will be, whereas a TDM plan is one mechanism for trying, kind of mitigating some of the impacts that result from the proposed users. Nonetheless, a detailed traffic analysis was included in the EIR, and a building-specific traffic analysis has been done for each of the FTP that has been approved till date. Kim Lee-Horn for Parcel B prepared a trip generation valuation in December of last year prior to the approval in January by the Commission, which essentially concluded that the additional new use of office in combination with retail and parking would actually result in fewer AM PM peak hour trips when compared to the approved 2008 PDP. TDM plan has been prepared and has been updated regularly, and this has been further outlined and documented in the staff report. The last appeal, last issue in the appeal letter is to do with the city's tower separation ordinance, which requires certain distances between the buildings over a hundred feet tall, and it does not apply in this case. So the appellant contends that the city keeps saying that this tower separation ordinance does not apply because the three buildings in question, that is Parcel A, Parcel B, and the Embry Station West, were all approved prior to the ordinance. And the appellant for this says that even if that is technically correct, the ordinance was put in place as the policy of the city for important planning and aesthetic reasons that matter regardless of some technicality. Well, PUDs and PDBs are issued for large development projects which are phased over a relatively long period of time to allow developers to propose a phase- a relatively long period of time to allow developers to propose a phased project. The idea is that it provides confidence to the developer to do such projects, and making sure that the development standards do not change with updates in city's general plan and planning regulations. So it's not just the issue of technicality. It is also the issue of the city being in compliance with its own rules, and it provides confidence to all developers that their permit conditions will not be modified as a result of city's objection. So that concludes my presentation. I would like to mention that we received a package from Verhun this afternoon at 4:30. There are hard copies for each one of you as well on your dials. I understand they also emailed this to all of you about an hour before the hearing. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I also wanted to bring to your attention, Commissioner Donaldson noted that the conditions of approvals in the staff report that were attached to the staff report, the old set were attached, because I know that in January, the commission made some minor changes to the conditions of approvals, so by mistake, the right set have not been attached to the staff reports. I would just like to set that straight for the record, that the intention was to include the conditions as finalized by the commission in January. So with that, I can take questions at this time, or later as the commission wishes. Otherwise, the next person to go would be the applicant.
Okay, thank you very much, Maru. Does anybody have any clarifying questions for Maru?
Oh. Madam Chair, I realize, or we realize that I think there were two commissioners that were absent from the previous meeting where the commission took action, and under the commission's bylaws, they need to state whether they have reviewed the record from the prior meeting.
Okay.
I believe it was Commissioner.
Commissioner Young and Vice Chair Herrera, I did send you both a link to the video. Were you both able to watch that video?
I was watching from home that night.
Okay.
I did not see it.
Okay. So Commissioner Young, under the Planning Commission rules of procedure, you will have to abstain from voting on the matter. You don't have to recuse yourself like a conflict of interest, but you're abstaining from the deliberation and from the voting.
Very good. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. So does anybody have any clarifying questions for Maru before we let the applicant come up? No? All right.
My name is Mark Stephan. I'm the president of City Center Realty Partners, the owner and developer of the public market. As some of you may know, I've been coming back and forth in front of the Planning Commission for the last five years with the goal of transforming the public market to a true mixed-use project, one that can be the gathering place for the community. And I think we've made great progress in those last five years working with this body. We've completed a great park. We've widened the roads. We've improved the food hall. In the next several months, there'll be 300 new housing units that will be completed. So we've made great progress. But parcel B, which is the item in question tonight, is an integral part of this project. And as you know, parcel B is right here. And another shot of it here. And the reason parcel B is an integral part of this project is for several reasons. One of it is that it allows us to provide replacement parking for parcel A, so that we can build 167 units on parcel A, I mean, excuse me, on A. The other reason is that with more than 500 employees will be in that building. It helps, a very important economic driver for our existing food hall and the small business users we have, and that's very important to us. And it also serves as an economic driver to help us to be able to afford to build a replacement parking for A and also on lot B. It's very expensive. Those spaces are more than $60,000 a space, and that's why we need to build this building as we've designed it as cost-effectively to be able to be the engine to provide those parking spaces. As I, since we're limited for time, and I view this more as a legal issue or debate, I'm going to ask our land use attorney, Chelsea McLean, to come up and discuss specifically the five points that Waram made.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chelsea McLean. I'm a partner at the law firm of Holland and Knight. I've been working on this project for more than five years. My law firm has been working on the project for more than 15 years. And to pause here on the history, I've got a detailed timeline up on the screen. The point I wanted to highlight is that, again, this has been a long-term project. The EIR and PDP were originally considered back around 2007. At that time, Waram made comments on massing and design that are very similar to the comments that they're making now. I've identified the specific comment letter. The city responded. In 2008, the city council certified the EIR and approved the PDP. In 2010, the Emery Station West project was approved with full and complete notice and, in fact, participation in the marketplace PDP that had been approved two years prior. Since then, the earlier FTP approval for parcel B had to be abandoned because it was not economically feasible, given construction costs and other factors, and since then, we've been working on the current proposal. As you all know, you thoughtfully considered the project in December and then approved in January, and since then, we have been scrambling to, more recently, consider the alternative plans we received only two days ago, and frankly, have had very little time to consider the package we received at 5:00 PM today. I'm usually sitting in the front row here, listening to the thoughtful conversation on design. The reason I'm up here today is because, again, we see this as very legally focused. City Council has directed that the conversation is limited to the points in the appeal. That is also reflected in the zoning code. I've mentioned the zoning code section here, which says that all appeals must be raised within 15 days of the original planning commission decision. And then, so again, the notion of submitting additional plans, additional arguments, letters, much after, months after the original appeal, we think is not in the spirit of the zoning code and administrative process. So focusing on the points of the appeal, the first point, and I'll try not to repeat what Maru has said, but the first comment was related to the project design. Erin will also touch on some of this. I've got, again, detailed bullets included in our submittal letter, but the parcel B design fulfills the original vision of the PDP. We think on all of the objective factors, it meets the consistency. We feel that the additional arguments raised by the appellant are much more subjective. They're in the eye of the beholder. The parcel B design has been articulated at the two ends, and in the middle, the east wall design has been carefully considered to reflect the west wall design as well. And the public market art plan, as you know, will result in really vibrant art on the east wall and on the parcel A staircase. The second comment is that a wind study is required. As Maru explained, the original EIR mitigation measure required the wind study on parcel A. We in fact have the wind meteorologist, Don Belanti, who was a part of the EIR and PDP analysis. He's confirmed that it was parcel A that was the concern. Nonetheless, a wind study was conducted, and part of the analysis, and the reason that the meteorologist concluded that there would not be impacts, is because there are naturally ventilated parking levels. And there's evident, or there's a statement in the 5:00 PM letter today saying that they believe only 10% to 20% of wind would flow through the building. We're not sure where that data comes from, and in fact, we believe that there's a much higher requirement to ventilate up to 40% of a parking structure. So again, we have our wind consultant here today. He can answer questions. But again, the conclusion is that there will not be wind impacts at the base of the building on parcel A, properties to the east and across the railroad tracks. Third comment is to avoid gaps where wind could accelerate. There was mention of a 176-foot distance. That's a comparison to the parcel B plan that was approved in 2016. As Maru mentioned, the city has concluded that the currently proposed design, the distance, does conform with that distance conceptually drawn in the PDP. On the TDM and traffic points, again, a TDM plan has been updated regularly, and I've mentioned some of the TDM features that are anticipated for parcel B. And with respect to traffic, Kim Lee-Horn responded to the comment that office and retail have different peak trip times. Kim Lee-Horn agreed that that is true, and nonetheless, the analysis of this parcel B proposal concluded that the R&amp;D uses would have less trips than previously analyzed in the EIR. And the fifth comment is that the project, the allegation that the project would violate the tower separation ordinance, Maru mentioned some of the responses to that, which are that the tower separation ordinance does not apply to parcel B. And in addition to those, we understand the city is considering whether to amend that, so that's a reflection of the city's current policy direction. And also, we note that parcel A is less than 100 feet. The tower separation ordinance, even if it were to apply, would not apply to A and B because parcel A is lower than 100 feet. The last slide I have here, we felt obligated to address kind of the implicit argument here, that parcel B will block views. It is not actually raised in the appeal, but we feel that it's implicit in these alternative plans, and we wanted to highlight that views are not protected under SEQA. The PDP common law are private rights. Private views are not protected under SEQA in urbanized areas. Compliance with zoning regulations, that is what is relevant, and under the Emeryville zoning code, conformance with PDP is what is relevant. In Emeryville, there is not a view or light ordinance, as is sometimes the case in other cities. There's no common law right to views, and that's based on case law that has deemed that public policy favors actually using real property over keeping it vacant for the sake of another view. There's no private right to views. There's no view or solar easement, no CCNRs. And finally, we note, interestingly, that Waram's leases are posted online. They do not grant tenants any right to views, and they explicitly acknowledge that future development in the vicinity of the project may block views. We feel there's no reliance on our plans. With that, I will turn it over to Erin.
Good evening, Erin Ashley. I'm a partner and managing principal of Hart Howerton here in San Francisco. I've spoken at length over five and a half years, so I'll cut it short. We created a model to help visualize what is really difficult to understand in two dimensions. And so, to the extent you'd like to come and see it, there's a drop-in. So the PDP model has been placed in the model, and you can see the Waram building and the proposed PDP buildings. And then again, the massing of what were proposed and you approved already, that could be dropped in. So happy to help with that if you'd like to see it, but I think we're pretty confident that it's well within the PDP. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant before we let the appellant come up? Nope? Okay. All right. We will give the appellant 10 minutes to respond.
Rich Robbins, Waram Development. There seems to be a misnomer here. One, we are not against density. Two, we're not against the project. Three, we want to expand the cluster and care greatly, being that we've been here 41 years and have been long-term stakeholders and owners. We are concerned, as we were deeply involved with our colleagues at TMG, in the conditions of approval in your Article II. If you read Article II, it states very clearly, certain conditions that must be approved. That is our concern. That is why we got involved. We're happy that it was remanded back to you, so it can be reconsidered. Given the briefness of time, I'm going to give it over to my colleague Jeff Sears to get specific.
Good evening, commissioners. Just for context, we first learned of this new project, this new idea for parcel B, a few days before the study session in mid-December. We learned via the staff report. Five weeks later, it was approved, those five weeks including the holiday period. So it's very hard to say that there's been a lot of time to try to absorb this project. We've been rushing to catch up since then. We certainly were aware of the terms of the PDP. And as Rich said, we worked with TMG so that the approval could incorporate a lot of components that ensured that as the requirements were applied to final designs, we could rely on things. We do not believe this project accomplishes those requirements. They're not being followed, and we're going to outline the failures in a second. The massing of the proposed parcel is much greater, the parcel B project is much greater than the PDP, and I think that's a violation to say that, well, we're somehow taking massing from parcel A. Parcel A is a separate decision. That's been made. I suppose it could be revised, but that isn't what's being proposed now. So this parcel B is at an issue. The PDP massing had major setbacks on both sides of the project on parcel B. There are none now. We have proposed an alternative that restores a major setback, which we think is a real opportunity and benefit that could create a public, an occupied place, a human-scale place. It also has wind benefits. You're seeing some of the original PDP here, the current proposal, and what we proposed as an alternative that was shared with you earlier this week. So our letter asking for an appeal mentioned design, height, articulation, and wind. As designed, the project meets, fails to meet a bunch of conditional approvals about design and wind, and also fails to follow some of the general plan policies. The conditions of approval were part of the SEQA analysis and the PDP. The city has the obligation to implement the conditions and the project mitigations. They can't be changed by action other than city council, and changing them may necessitate further environmental study. The proposed project's 46,000 square feet than that approved in the PDP for parcel B. The EIR found that the aesthetic and wind mitigation measures were needed even without the added space here, so they're more important now. Failure to implement the requirements could indicate that more environmental study is required. Consistency with the PDP alone is not sufficient if the condition approvals are not satisfied. So where do they fail? I'll read some of the conditions. Condition of approval 2E1 says, "Design of building facade shall include sufficient detail to avoid the appearance of blank walls or box-like forms." As designed, the project couldn't be more boxy. Except for mostly solid stair towers at each end, the project is an exact rectangular box over 460 feet long, 122 feet wide, and 113 feet high. Condition of approval 2E2 says, "The design should include vertical walls broken up with architectural detailing, protruded and recessed tower elements, step-back upper floors to provide appropriate building height transition to adjacent buildings." The proposal fails on all these points. As I said, parcel B and the PDP had large setbacks on the south and north. Our alternative creates a major setback on the south, which again, could be utilized as a landscape terrace to add visual interest, human scale, and activity. We're not trying to design the project for the applicant, but we know that elements such as are called for in these conditions of approval can be implemented. We've done so ourselves in many of our projects. We're going to show you a few pictures here. Meanwhile, while you're looking at those, I'll talk about condition of approval 2E2 that says, "Towers and buildings along the railroad tracks shall be articulated with treatment, such as variations in building planes, colors, materials, balconies, and trellises, to ensure that no visual wall is created along the railroad right-of-way." The proposed project again fails. The naked open parking decks cannot reasonably be argued as aesthetic relief to the building plane. Applying art to the garage does not change the flat plane of the building along the east. Wind remains a real issue. We have engaged our own wind consultant, who's reviewed the study that was done for the applicant, the area, and some of the facts of the proposal and our proposed alternative. The conditions of approval and the EIR call for final designs, and I'll quote, "To avoid narrow gaps between buildings where wind can be accelerated." The current design does not do that. The current design does not do that. The conditions in the EIR specifically call for wind tunnel or computerized computational testing of any adverse wind impact, not just on the bridge, for all the projects. The applicant's study says the proposed project will not create material worsening of the wind compared to existing conditions. That just doesn't make common sense, and it certainly hasn't held up to our peer review. Our consultant CCP Wind Engineering had these findings. While they agree with the method of the applicant's study, they find the conclusions to be incorrect. They find that the proposed project is substantially different than what was proposed in the 2008 PDP, and that it will have significant wind effects more severe than those shown in the EIR. They find that the project will create significantly increased ground-level winds between parcels A and B, wind speeds similar to what's experienced today between the Marketplace Tower and its neighbors to west and north. Everyone in Emeryville knows the winds in those areas are extremely unpleasant today. Wind speed will also increase along the railroad tracks and the passenger platform at the train station, an important public amenity. Wind speeds will increase at our new Emery Station West Ray's publicly accessible landscape plaza. Our consultant does believe that the airflow through the garage only will allow 10% to 20% effectiveness in reducing the flow through the gap. It may be able to naturally ventilate, but in terms of reducing that impact through the gap, it has a very small impact. So our option with 125-foot gap between the parcels and the large setback where it goes above the garage materially reduces the wind impacts compared to the existing proposal. Our consultant went further and said if we could widen the gap at grade to 150 feet, the wind impacts would be equal to what they are today, meaning static, which would be even better, and it could become a great public open space. Since the applicant really didn't have interest in exploring alternatives that responded to our concerns, we went ahead and spent a good deal of money and time with experienced lab architect GGA and other consultants to create the alternatives we showed to you. The option very closely resembles their project in terms of, it's the same rentable square footage that are important to create the parking. We understand that. It has the same tall floor heights and large floor plates that lab users use and that we're familiar with. It more closely resembles, however, the original PDP because it has large setbacks that reduce the impact on our campus, on the Amtrak Transit Center, and the overall neighborhood. The proposal we had Option 1 has parking that meets city code. The applicant's proposal has above-code levels. If those are critical to them, sort of goes against what the city has been pursuing in terms of minimizing parking and cards. But if it's critical, they can accomplish that same level of parking by putting a below-grade parking level, something we've done multiple times on our campus, and no can be done. So you're being shown versions of our options. What we're trying to say is, we would like a new development. It just can't have so many negative impacts on the surroundings, us and others. We think that's possible in a way that gives the developer the economic formula to make it happen and would be a very good addition. It will support tenants in the marketplace. It'll support retail and restaurant people we have in the ground floor of our buildings. Our campus is full. We'd like to see more space to allow the cluster to grow. It just has to be delivered in a way that doesn't negatively impact everyone else.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the appellant?
I have one. So you guys are really concerned about the wind in this project. Did you ask your consultant to do a wind study on the 2008 PDP and what that would have done for wind?
So we've been working as a team. A lot of this has gone through our architects, but one of their findings says that this, as proposed, the proposal, is a more significant negative impact than the 2008 PDP. That's what they said.
Thank you.
Any other questions in the side room? Gail, any questions?
Helen?
Okay. So I will open it up for the public hearing now. So anybody that wishes to speak on this item, please approach. Fill out one of the yellow speaker slips, and you have three minutes to speak. No one is here to speak on this item? Okay, go ahead. Approach the microphone, please.
You can fill the speaker card out afterwards. You can fill it out afterwards.
Okay. So I just have a couple of questions. My name is Fran Cortel. I actually serve on the Budget Advisory Committee, and I came here just as an interested citizen. I wanted to see how you do things here. And I noticed that two things have happened recently that I think impact how the planning committee functions. One is the Caltrans project that has been put on pause. And also, yesterday, there was an article in the Chronicle about the adverse impact of the fires and on air quality and on the environment, as it has happened very recently. And where I find this interesting is that when a project is approved, if the city can't change the conditions of the approval, I think that sometimes things happen recently, and projects have to be adjusted, taking those factors into consideration. So that's really my comment, that when there are recent changes that change the environmental surround that we all live in, maybe projects do have to be adjusted. And I don't know that it's a fair thing to keep them to the original spec when the surrounding environment has changed.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak on this item? All right. I am seeing no more public speaker, so I'm going to close a public hearing. And at this time, I would like to give the applicant some time to respond to the appellant. If you would like to take an additional five minutes to respond.
Sure, thanks. Aaron Ashley again. We had the chance to review these plans yesterday. We haven't seen the wind study, and our wind consultant hasn't had the chance to look at it either. You know, from our standpoint, we've been looking at this for years in a really comprehensive way. There's the economics, the human experience. Aesthetics is certainly a part of it. You know, from our standpoint, we can simply evaluate this proposed design from the standpoint of, you know, they took a couple of weeks, and this is a really, there's some great ideas. And when you look at something a lot, it's always fun to sort of see it. But at the same point, when you test it against all the reasons that make a building work or a community work, it falls short on a number of things. And so, you know, Mark and I thought we would just highlight a couple of those. We need 560 parking spots because we're not parking an office building. We're parking a district. We're parking the retail. We're parking the existing office market, office building. And as a district, this is one of the more aggressive shared parking strategies that one could have. I mean, it lives up to the ambition of a very sustainable mixed-use place. This is a complicated piece of dirt. The rail line was built where it was built, and everything west of the rail line was pretty nasty bay mud. The soil conditions, the existing rail line, make it very difficult to go below grade. The assumption that you could reduce the floor-to-floor height on all the garage floors doesn't work for the buses and accessible vans that we need to be able to use this, so maybe a couple of floors. 15-foot floor-to-floor for R and D isn't adequate for world-class. So we want to attract the great companies here. They want 16-foot floor-to-floor, go up and down the peninsula. That's what it is. So the suggestion that we could somehow get another floor in here by shortening the building doesn't work. The experience of this place as the retail district, and the reason the folks in the Render Aid would want to come here and shop, is the connectivity of that retail experience. So just shortening the building by a significant amount doesn't reinforce the walkability of this main street. The whole reason that parcel B exists and Shell Mound was relocated was to create this two-sided street, this walkable retail. And to insert a plaza for the sake of a view corridor doesn't reinforce the whole reason that Mark and his team were interested in this project in the first place. So, you know, it kind of goes without saying that all of this results in a significantly more expensive building to create, and really puts us in a position to say, you know, we're accustomed to spending months thinking about schemes before we show it to staff, and then HU on it with us, and then finally, it gets to you and we think it's ready. And to sort of dignify something that's been cooked in the dark and brought in front of you at the last minute, it's really hard for us to do. But again, appreciate a second set of eyes.
You've got about two minutes.
Okay. My name is Don Belanti. I'm a meteorologist. Been working since 1972 in the field of wind around buildings. At that point in 1972, I built a wind tunnel in San Francisco and began doing wind tunnel studies back then. So very experienced with this. I was the consultant in the 2007 EIR. If you look at the draft EIR, Appendix F is my letter, very similar to the letter that I just prepared on parcel B, or at least similar methodology. Back then, we were looking at several structures. There were six or seven new buildings. I reviewed the plan, and I was looking at, as I did for parcel B, the exposure of buildings, the massing of buildings, and their orientation. Because we know that in order to build a building in San Francisco, or excuse me, in the Bay Area that has pretty much bad winds, you have to do three things wrong. You have to have it exposed to the wind. It has to be a massive building that is an obstacle, and it has to be oriented into the prevailing wind direction, although you may have more than one prevailing wind direction to worry about. In any case, that is what I did when I reviewed the building. Came to the conclusion that it is not exposed, at least half of the building is sheltered by an existing building right across the street. The other thing that was, it is not a solid object. The wind can flow through it. What happens when you have wind impacts around buildings? High pressure on one side, the upwind side, low pressure on the backside. That is a gradient that drives the wind around the sides. That's why gaps between buildings are important, because that is where the wind... In any case, because of the fact that we do have a non-pervious building, that is why my conclusion was it would not have strong wind effects.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. So now, we will open it up to deliberation. Commissioner Keller, would you like to start us off?
Madam Chair, if I may give a suggestion to the commission about proceeding forward. We don't know what the commission's going to do tonight, but if the commission is inclined to take action tonight, we would recommend that the commission give staff the opportunity to revise the proposed resolution to conform to the evidence that's in the record. Obviously, the resolution was prepared before we received the submittal this evening. And while we can often make some adjustments on the fly, this is something where staff would appreciate a little bit more time. And so, the commission should continue with its deliberations, but instead of voting on the matter tonight, we would advise that the commission continue this item to the next Planning Commission meeting, which is May 23 at 6:30 PM, and direct staff to bring back a resolution that conforms to the evidence and to the Planning Commission deliberation. I just want to make clear that the public hearing is closed so that we would not be going through this again. It would be simply to adopt the resolution as you guys have, or maybe directing tonight. It would come back as like old business, or we don't have consent agendas, but... We can create a consent agenda. So there would be no new public hearing.
No new public hearing, and this would be in an effort to have staff consider some of the last-minute material that was submitted?
We would conform the resolution to the evidence that's been presented tonight.
The resolution that's before you, if you were to choose to adopt it, only addresses the explicit points that were made in the appeal letter that was filed on February 8. So that resolution does not consider any of the additional material that has come in since that time.
Which has been pretty substantial. I mean, we have gotten some more information from the appellant since the original appeal letter. So there is quite a bit of information, but Commissioner Dolson, do you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the legal question of how much of the additional information about conditions of approval are we allowed to be considering?
Well, so I'll walk you through the process. So the Planning Commission adopted a resolution back in January, and at that point, the Planning Commission jurisdiction ends because they've adopted that resolution. The resolution did not become final, though. It was appealed up to the city council. The city council then said, "Well, we need a little bit more information." And so, they directed the Planning Commission to hear the matter again, but limited to just the issues raised in the appeal letter. However, because that first resolution never took effect, we do need to adopt a resolution that makes the findings for the entire project, which is why the resolution is designated with an R after it. So it's 18-dash, or 19-something R to indicate it's on a remand. 18001R. So the council's direction is really only to consider what is in the appeal letter. Now, what the appellant, or WERM, is trying to say is that some of this relates to what was in the appeal letter, and it's up to the commission to decide whether they agree with that or not. That is within the commission's discretion.
Thank you. So do we need to vote to continue the item after our deliberation, if that is indeed what the commission wishes to do, or is that something that the decision I can make?
No. The commission would need to vote to continue it to a date specific.
Do we need to vote on that before or after the deliberation?
No. Deliberate first. And then, after you guys have finished your deliberation and you're ready to kind of take that next step, I can chime in again and let you know.
Madam Chair, can I make a suggestion? Because the points that we have been asked to do is to address certain points in the letter. That's all we're allowed to do. If we're going to be considering things beyond that scope, I think having a discussion tonight is pointless, number one, because it may raise issues that are moot come down the line when we start looking at these other things. It's their contention that, you know, we're not following the things as we should be following. The additional thing is Commissioner Young can't involve in this discussion, though, because he hasn't viewed the tape or read it. This would give him the opportunity to do that. So I would say, it seems to me pointless to have a discussion when this, if we continue it, which I'm really upset about and doing, the applicant has been more than patient on this, and the appellate keeps throwing up. And each time they come to us, it's something different. You know, before, it was about creating a seven-story canyon. Now that seems to have disappeared. And now, it's all about wind. So I'm really upset with this, that we keep throwing the applicant, you know, down the road, down the road, down the road. It seems like what legal advice we're getting is that if we don't, we're just creating more reason for appeal and even potentially a lawsuit. So I think, as this body, we need to fully vet this. And if we're going to reschedule this to vet it again, I have no comments tonight. It's kind of pointless for me to go over my, you know, notes that I've taken tonight because they may not be germane after we talk about these other issues. That's my suggestion. But the question I have is, does staff need a full four weeks to answer these questions? Because I'm open to a special meeting in two weeks to get this project going or not. Because I think the applicant has been more than patient in waiting to whether they could start their project or not. So I think there are some clear-cut questions here. They've made a clear case that I think the staff could address, and we can hold a special meeting in two weeks.
I have one question before you answer that. If we decide to continue the item after deliberation today, will there be any additional deliberation at the next hearing by the commission?
The idea that I'm trying to propose is no. You would simply adopt the resolution, and we'd move on.
Andrew, how can we adopt a resolution when new items have been brought forth and we can't discuss it amongst ourselves? Because this is the only place we can discuss that.
The idea is you have your deliberation... We, the idea is, you have your deliberations tonight, and if you need more information, then that's something, you know, I don't know who's going to bring it back, but then we can bring back the item as the commission directs. But the way it stands right now, the resolution in the record does not take into account the evidence that was submitted tonight. And so, we would need to revise that resolution to conform to the evidence that's in the record and to whatever deliberations the Planning Commission is going to have tonight regarding the project.
But I need to stop you there, because you're saying you're going to review evidence that's been brought forward tonight. But it's not on our agenda. We can't discuss the evidence that's been brought forward tonight. So we can't deliberate on that. We have to wait till you guys have restudied it, and then we can deliberate on it.
It's on your agenda.
Yeah, you can consider it tonight.
Even the plans that they brought up with us, because the direction from council was to address the points in the letter. That's clear.
The contention is that this additional information relates to the points in the letter.
Okay, but I haven't had a time to fully review these. I can't really discuss these tonight.
We're saying, we, right, I understand that. You said that it wasn't on the agenda. It is on the agenda. You could discuss it if you were prepared to, but if you're not prepared to, that's, that's fine. But legally, you could if you wish to.
If, if you need more, if the commission needs more time to fully review the information, then that is, you have the ability to continue the item.
The issue that I have with that is, you know, we are giving the appellant additional time outside of what is, you know, like legally, there's times, timeframes for when people can submit information for an appeal and the appeal time, and...
We don't have any local rules like that.
So, they can continue to, you know, give us more and more evidence every time and drag this on?
No, we've closed the public hearing. So that's what, to move on and to stop more evidence from coming in, we've closed the public hearing.
So, tonight, we would only be able to discuss the information that has been presented up until now, but the issue was that we've gotten additional information last minute that none of us have had a chance to do.
So I think maybe the commission needs to first answer the question of, what do you want to do with the information that was submitted at approximately 4:30 today? Do you feel that you've had enough time to consider it?
I do not. Is that clear enough? I have not had enough time to consider it.
As to the commission, how do you feel?
I mean, I think we could sit here and debate the materials until we get a better understanding of it, and that'd be my preference, is to take some time, review it as part of our deliberations, and get this done tonight.
Vice Chair?
I share the similar sentiments with Commissioner Keller. I don't feel as though I've had enough time to review what was given to us today, waiting here while, when we came to this meeting. So, I, that's what I, that's how I feel.
Commissioner Donaldson?
I have often been really frustrated with having piles of things submitted to us that are on our desks when we get here, and hearing that it was sent five minutes before the hearing. And I don't think that there is sufficient time to have really digested 31 pages of exhibits and six pages of single-spaced, and now, we have six, it's more than six pages of single-spaced arguments. You know, I don't, I don't appreciate that.
Okay. So, I...
Madam Chair, I just want to throw out another option for you guys, is that you can take a recess now and read the materials and come back. Just throwing that as an option for the commission.
Would we also have the option to end this item now and come back at the next meeting to actually deliberate, once we've had an opportunity, to review the material and review staff's analysis of the material as well? Because what I'm hearing from my fellow commissioners, at least the majority of them, is that, you know, I mean, and myself included, we definitely didn't have time to review this information. You know, I mean, this came in while I was at work today, and I didn't find out about it until I got here. So I have not even flipped through these plans. And it sounds like, you know, the rest of the commission also feels like they've not looked at this information. So it does seem like it might not be worth our while to have a deliberation on, you know, only the material that we've had enough time to look at, when staff will consider the rest of the material in the eventual resolution. So with that, I think that maybe...
Before we make a motion, the one thing I'd like to just ask is, you know, we can't, we have a period of time when the agenda packet is done and closed, and we can't add things to the agenda. Why is it we accept items like this after that period? It seems to me that when the agenda is done and posted, no other materials are submitted. So I don't understand why these kind of things are added to our dais the day of the meeting, when the city would not be allowed to add something to our agenda or any more information. So it seems like, why do we accept this?
So, the whole point of publishing the agenda in advance is so that the public has the opportunity...
And it's the law.
And it's the law, to know what's being considered on the agenda. They have the staff report, they have the materials. And so, once that's published, then the public begins to submit their comments and submit their materials. So, Waram, and the applicant, and the commission, you actually all got the staff report and all the materials at roughly the same time. So the applicant and Waram can't submit anything until after we've posted our staff report. They can submit something ahead of time, but they're not able to comment on the staff's analysis until after that staff report.
Understand. So would, could it not be possible that we do put a timeframe? Because as you may have noticed, when we talked about the trees on the ether, on the duplex thing, I went by and looked at those trees, okay? I take, I hopefully get this agenda packet by Friday, and I spend Friday till Wednesday night going through the packet, writing up notes, going out and looking at things. So that's the consideration time I take in this. Having something delivered to me on the dais gives me none of that.
The purpose of the public hearing is for any member of the public to present information and evidence to the commission. So any member of the public, including in this case, the appellant, has the right to submit information to the commission up until the point where the public hearing is closed. Normally, we don't get such a volume of information that the commission is not able to render a decision at that meeting. But it is possible, as is evidenced tonight. But I just want to reiterate, the purpose of a public hearing is for any member of the public to present information to the commission to try to influence your decision, and that is what Waram has done, and they have the right to do that right up until the public hearing is closed, which Chair Barrera just did.
Meaning that we won't get any more information after this point, but the question is, what, what, what do we want to do with the information that we have gotten, you know, up until this point? So...
May, may I recommend, it sounds like the direction you're heading is to, the public hearing is closed, continue the item to a date certain, either a special meeting or your next regular meeting, continue it as old business at that meeting. You would not have to reopen the public hearing. You would not have to take any further public comment or information from anybody. Just have your deliberation at that meeting, and then consider the revised resolution that staff will have prepared by that time.
That's what I favor.
Do we have to come up with the date of the special hearing right now?
Yes.
Or we could just tailor it to our next May meeting?
You can. Yes, you can do that.
You know how many items are on that agenda so far?
Well...
I was hearing a couple of items in your staff report, or not just what your director's report.
While you look that up, maybe I can ask staff this question. Will you be giving another presentation at the next meeting if we continue the item? So it will only be deliberation?
It will be, we will present the revised resolution to conform to the evidence, and we will not have a presentation. It'll just go straight to Planning Commission deliberation.
Okay.
So what we have on the May meeting now is, well, there are a couple of code amendments that could be continued to a future meeting. We have a presentation, a study session on the 40th and San Pablo Transit Hub design.
Okay.
Uh... I have ONI, and that's in June. I have that in June. Really?
It's in May, yeah.
Okay. Study session on the ONI project.
Oh, boy.
And a few other items. We have a sign application for a high-rise sign at 1900 Powell Street, and then there are a few other code amendment things that are not time-critical that could be moved to a future meeting.
Okay. The ONI project's probably going to be a big one. Can, can we decide on a special meeting date tonight?
May I just chime in on that? That's fine. I mean, staff can certainly arrange for that. I would just say that if you wanted to do it on the 9th in two weeks, that is really tight, because we need to get the packet out 10 days prior to that meeting.
There's no legal counsel available on the 9th.
Okay.
I know, we're...
We'll make Michael come.
No, he's, we're both away at a, at a city attorney conference.
Well, that, that...
A week later would be fine.
The 16th? I think the 16th would, should work.
Uh-huh. Hang on, I think we all need time to look at our calendars.
That's a week before your next regular meeting.
I'm not available.
I unfortunately would be unavailable. I have my sister's wedding.
Does it have to be a Thursday?
No, I was just going to say, it does not have to be a Thursday.
Cannot be a Tuesday, though. First or third Tuesday.
Well, no, but it could be the 14th, which is the second Tuesday.
I'm available on the 14th.
14th works for me.
14th would be available for me as well.
Let me just take a real quick look at the city calendar to make sure that we're not scheduling that on top of something else. Da-da-da.
It says the 14th.
Well, the May 14th is blank on the city event calendar. It's like one of the few days that is blank.
Not anymore.
Not anymore, yeah.
The 14th works for me as well. And is that sufficient time for staff to review the information and get out the notice, do what you need to do?
I would like to just clarify for everyone what we're going to be doing on the 14th, just so we're all on the same page.
Okay, so, can we agree on the date, though? The 14th works for everyone? Okay.
6:30?
Doesn't have to be 6:30, but that's fine.
Or whatever. I mean, that's one...
6:30's good.
If that's what you're used to, that's fine.
Okay, so go ahead, Andrea, please.
So, what staff is recommending, based on commission feedback, is that the commission vote to continue this item to May 14 at 6:30 PM. And when it returns to the commission on May 14, there will be no staff presentation, because the public hearing is closed. You have all your information. The purpose is to give the commission time to consider the materials that were submitted this evening and to all the evidence. We will, however, prepare a revised resolution that takes into, that conforms to the evidence that was heard tonight and presented earlier today.
Okay.
But there will be no staff presentation. It'll just be, no new staff report. It'll just be, here's the new...
And commission deliberation. There will be commission deliberation, and then commission vote.
Yeah.
If it's time, I'd like to make a motion that that's what we do tonight.
One quick question before we do that.
Sorry.
Where will it be, what, what type of item will this be on the agenda if it's not a public hearing anymore?
Old business.
Old business, okay. So, go ahead.
For Commissioner Keller's motion, I would need him to include the date and time.
Okay. So can we please get a motion for...
Make a motion that we continue this item to May 14 at 6:30 for commission deliberation, consideration of the new resolution, and a vote on that item.
Seconded.
Okay.
Okay. On the motion, Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hidalgo?
Aye.
Commissioner Keller?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson is excused. Commissioner Young?
Am I on recuse?
Can I vote on this?
You can vote on the continuance, and then if you watch...
Aye.
Okay.
And Vice Chair Barrero?
Aye.
Chair Barrera?
Aye.
Six ayes. The motion is approved, and just let me complete the Assistant City Attorney's sentence, which was that Commissioner Young, if you are, if you watch the video between now and May 14, then you'll be able to participate at that time.
I'm running Sony Jobs, so I, I'll get it in there. I'll squeeze it in there one place or another. Thank you.
Quick question. Does that also apply to Commissioner Thompson, if she is available for the 14th?
She will need to, well, she was there on the, on the, at the January meeting, but obviously, she's not here tonight, so she will need to watch the video of tonight's meeting in order to participate on May...
14th.
14th.
Yeah, okay. Okay. All right. Thank you very much, and...
Thank you all.
Stay tuned. Next, we'll move on to an administrative item, which is the capital improvement program. It's a review of the proposed five-year CIP for the 2019, 2020, 2023 year.
They don't want to hear it.
They're hearing it, yeah. I don't think they're...
You can bring that back earlier, next time, if you could look at it before. That would be helpful.
That's right. Everybody hates us.
Andrew?
Yeah, no, I don't think...
Are you having fun yet?
Would it be bad to go, believe it or not, if the applicant really would like to adopt this version anyway?
I think they made it kind of clear. That's what my understanding is. There's either too little parking, or they're being asked to do some upgrade parking, which is...
Okay.
Chair Barrera, may I be...
Yes, please. Thank you.
Good evening again. So this is a public hearing item to consider whether our CIP conforms with our general plan.
Correction, it's an administrative item.
Administrative, sorry. So since the 19, so this is in preparation for the city to be adopting a budget in June. So the city plans to adopt a budget for not only the capital improvement budget, but also the general fund budget. So that, so in order to do that, it has to pass a five-year CIP plan. And it's planning to hold a study session on May, let's see, May 7, followed by a budget presentation on May 21, and with a possible adoption on June 4. And the reason why we are doing this exercise is to ensure that all the projects that are included in the capital improvement plan are, has a relationship with what is identified in the general plan. So the idea is that, you know, no city manager or no public works director or no city council member gets to put a project of their own choice just because they want to. This is that it has to be something that is within, and it implements the general plan. So that's the reason for this exercise that cities are made to go through, to make sure that, you know, it keeps basically corruption at bay, is what it is. So since 1980, the city council has used the five-year CIP to implement the goals and visions of the community as defined in our general plan. The most recent budget was approved in September 2017 for the fiscal year 2016-17 through 2020-21. The CIP included 89 projects costing about $145 million. And some of the main projects include the Cooperation Yard and the EOC Center, the Senior Center Rehab, the Joseph Emory Skate Park, the Transit Center Plaza, which is now complete, and the 3706 San Pablo Affordable Housing Project, which is currently under construction. So the draft CIP that will be going to the council is divided into the following categories. One is the community facilities and facilities maintenance, housing, information technology, the marina, pedestrian bicycle improvements, public art, sanitary sewer, streetscape system, transportation and vehicle replacement. So these are standard categories that, that the city follows in when it produces a CIP. And on your left, it's, and it's been outlined in the staff report as well, is the list of various projects for you to kind of look at and for the planner to, to make sure that these two conform to certain policies and goals in, in the general plan. And the ones that these projects conform to is the goal in the public facilities section of the general plan, as well as the park and open space goals of the general plan. I'm not going to read through all... I'm not gonna read through all, uh, the different goals that have been outlined or which match up. So this is for the housing, and of course, all the housing projects and programs, uh, will contribute the city's, uh, housing element, objective of promoting affordable housing. Uh, so this is very much, uh, in terms of implementing our, uh, housing element of the general plan. Uh, in terms of information technology, these are the various projects, and they are again consistent with the general plan, public services and facilities goals of utilities and infrastructure systems, uh, which provide for, or which create for a safe, reliable, and adequate services. Uh, these are the various pedestrian bicycle improvements, and you'll see that some of them you've, you already are familiar with because they have been continued on, uh, from the last CIP to the current one. Either they were not funded at some point, or they are still under construction, or they are in plan ch, uh, plan design phase. Again, all these proposed projects will be implementing, uh, various general, uh, general plan, uh, goals of the transportation section of the general plan, as well as the urban design sections. Uh, this is the public art. Again, this is consistent with our urban design section of the general plan. And the sanitary sewer rehab program, uh, falls under the general plan, uh, public services and facilities goals, uh, to provide adequate, uh, public facilities in the city. And in terms of transportation, these are again consistent with, uh, the overall goal of providing a comprehensive transportation system. This is the street ca, uh, streetscape, uh, projects, uh, that, uh, are being included in the draft CIP for consideration for the council, and they are again consistent with various goals of the urban design section, of the transportation section, and, uh, of certain general plan policies as well. So that concludes my presentation. We do have, uh, the Public Works Director present if you have any questions regarding the CIP. Uh, otherwise, our recommendation is that you approve the resolution, uh, as outlined in the resolution attached to the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions, Maru?
I just have a, a quick question. Maru, this goes back to, I guess it shows how long I've been involved in this city, but I noticed that the Pickle Works pedestrian path is on here, and I know that was always a contentious thing with the owner of Pickle Works. Have we resolved that? Do we actually have a actionable plan to put something through the Pickle Works, or is that still kind of a fantasy project?
I don't have an answer to that.
I believe it's the latter, but perhaps, uh, Andrew Klow can provide some clarity?
So it's, so it isn't, we haven't resolved the fact of getting Pickle Works to support us and putting that through?
Frankly, I'm not sure why that's in the CIP.
Okay. I just, it kinda stood out to me going, wow, did we finally make some headway on that?
No.
Okay.
That, I believe, would require eminent domain.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? None? All right. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion to adopt the CIP.
Second.
Approved, I mean, uh, sorry. Uh, motion by Commissioner Hidalgo and seconded by Vice Chair Barrero. Uh, Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hidalgo?
Aye.
Commissioner Keller?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson is excused. Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Vice Chair Barrero?
Aye.
And Chair Barrera?
Aye.
Six ayes. The motion is approved. We will forward your recommendation to the city council. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, we will move on to our next, um, item, which is the planning commissioner's comment. And this is the time that, um, we can discuss the American Planning Association National Planning Conference that happened a couple of weeks ago. Um, I'm not sure who of you attended, but if anybody would like to, um, discuss anything from that experience, please do so now.
Um, I attended four sessions on Saturday and two on Sunday. Um, they were informative. Um, personally, I don't get a lot out of these things, so I'm glad I, that the city didn't pay to fly us somewhere, and I don't know that I would attend one of these again. Uh, maybe it was just because it was such a beautiful weekend, and I would have rather been outside than in a conference in the convention center. Um, what, well, the one thing I did find over and over that, there are two things that I just really was fascinated about, is how far along our city is compared to other cities. They were talking about parking, uh, minimums and this parking standards and traffic measurements, and going, we're so far beyond that. We did that years ago. So sitting through and listening to that, I was like, wow, you people really need to kind of catch up. So I was very impressed with what our little city has accomplished in its time. The other thing that impressed me, and I've talked into, uh, convention goers from Minneapolis and other places, Midwest and East, is how parking is beginning to be looked at differently. Car, it seems like a lot of these communities are finally seeing that we can't design our communities around cars and everything else, secondly. That it was really like, you know, we gotta really reduce the parking because we have, I think one person was saying, a third of our parking is unused. That's developed land that we could do for people, and one was saying, we need to start planning for people and not cars, and it's like, oh, okay, we've been talking about that for a while now. But it's really good to kind of see that in this kind of format, that people are, you know, who knows how fast it'll grow or whatever, but at least the seeds have been planted. So I was very impressed with those things and was happy with that.
Excellent, thank you.
I, I was unfortunately at home with Dayquil and Nightquil because my wonderful coworker got me sick. So, um, I've attended the conference in the past in LA and Chicago, and it's always wonderful, so I was super bummed that I missed it.
Um, I was able to attend, um, all through, through the whole conference. Um, I really appreciated the fact that you all, uh, were able to send us there. So thank you. Uh, there were some common themes in terms of, uh, workshops and, uh, speakers that I, that I saw. Equity was definitely a common thread that I saw through the conference. Um, I believe that Maru also had a presentation about equity. I wasn't able to make it, but, um, I, I, that was a common theme that I felt, and I appreciated that in terms of, uh, our planning lens. Um, and so that was one, I, uh, theme that really spoke to me. Uh, the second, uh, and, well, there are a lot, but, uh, I, I attended a lot of the transportation, uh, themes. Uh, micro-mobility was a new term that I hadn't heard before, that I was really interested in learning about, and that includes bike share, uh, scooters, uh, new types of transportation that don't involve cars. Um, I am interested in these because I think that this is a way for us to reduce our reliance on cars, especially in such a small city like ours. Uh, so that's something I'm looking to explore more in terms of how our city, uh, is planning for these types of transportation. Uh, so excited to see that. Uh, the, I, I attended a session on, uh, autonomous vehicles, which was really interesting. Um, in that session, I learned a bit about parking demand and how with the use of autonomous vehicles in the future, which are inevitably coming our way, um, there's gonna be a, uh, less demand for parking. Um, and so that was a message that I, uh, felt was in line with the direction that things are taking with reducing parking, uh, maximums. Uh, and so, uh, that, uh, said, um, yep, it sounded as though there's, um, also some work being done faster than we think for, uh, larger, like, uh, instead of cars on the ground, cars that are able to fly. And it's, it sounds like that's coming sooner than we imagine. So I'm so interested to see more about that. Uh, and, uh, the, the, the final, um, the keynote speaker, uh, really left me inspired. Um, and his message was about, um, leaders and, um, being, being, not being afraid to, uh, really, uh, step outside of our comfort zone and, and, and be, you know, like, he, he shares a story about, uh, gosh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take it a long time. I wanna share this with you all if you're interested in talking. But overall, um, I saw a lot of value in us attending these workshops and the conference. I, I hope that we're able to attend, uh, next year. Um, and, uh, thank you for letting us, uh, go. Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, I attended a number of workshops, too, and there, there was just a real range of interesting stuff, from inclusive housing to pedestrian placemaking for all. Um, a couple of the ones, uh, you know, Future of Retail, a lot of different things, but a few of the ones that I found really interesting were art and cultural planning, and then we're in the midst of doing some planning for our art center, and it was interesting to hear different perspectives on the way that's being done in three different communities. And there was also a reception for planners interested in art that afterwards, that had more speakers, and it was, that was also very interesting. Um, there was another one that I thought was worthwhile for our community. It was called Access to Experiences, Not Acres, and it was a different way of looking at park space when you have limited space, realizing that you don't necessarily, what people are looking for are different types of things to do. What people might want from a park could be a contemplative experience, a place where you can be in nature and sit and read a book or something, or a social experience, a place where you can go and meet up with your friends and either sit and have a picnic or do some activity, or a physical experience, which could be like, uh, going for a hike, playing soccer. So you may have a 200-acre park where really all you're gonna do is be able to go take a hike, and you may have a half-acre park where you can throw frisbee, meet up with your friends, have a picnic, sit under a tree. So it's a way of looking at what are the individual parks offering and how they're designed, so, especially from my professional perspective. That one was really interesting. Another one was about age-friendly communities, and the most, um, inspiring speaker in that one was really making comparisons about what is good for kids and what is good for elders. And a lot of the things, a lot of the services, a lot of the mobility issues, a lot of the safety issues, just, just a lot of aspects of community life that support kids up to age eight or 10 are things that are good for elder people that are losing their mobility and need some more assistance and services. So there were some really interesting things that I thought were directly relevant to our community.
Wow, cool.
Wow, um, wow, that was the, um, I, I really, I attended a lot of the, um, just, a lot of the vendor booths. I went through a lot of them and looked at all the student projects that were out, and just really kind of, kind of spent a long time just studying those. Um, I thought there was a kind of a really, um, interesting theme that what young people see as far as like, how they wanna see their cities actually change, and I was, I was actually surprised because someone who's like my age, I remember like how we grow into planning, how we have these expectations, and I think these younger people kind of see things a little differently. Um, I went to, I was really surprised at the amount of things on electronic maps that are out there with a bunch of layers, and, um, I know our city has that, but it's kind of fun that you could put on goggles and stand on the spot and do a lot, a lot of VR and AR stuff. That was really kind of cool. And then I think that the, the, the neatest, the couple neat ones I went to, um, being someone who's into disaster relief, I, uh, visited a couple lectures on flooding and disasters and, um, and what, what we might have to really think about. And I know we're here at the Bay, maybe the, maybe the seas are rising, but, you know, I, I don't know what, what measures we're having in front, trying to protect our city from, um, upcoming waters, but I think it's something that, um, we need to, as a city, need to think about. I, I don't know if it's a wall. I'm gonna show what to do. Move 80 or move the, move the, you know, move the railroad, railroads a little bit. Um, I went to one that was kind of unrelated to Emeryville, just to kind of see what other people are doing, and this is one to, what do you do with golf courses? I, it was one that was out there. It was like, I walked in and I sat down, and it was a, and it was this, a couple people were up there. The guy has this golf course and that he, that was not taken over by their HOA or something like that, and he went in and, uh, moved all the trails and, you know, pulled up, filled in all the holes and filled in all the sand traps and, and kind of brought the golf course back into a really wonderful space that this other lady who was standing next to him, I mean, that lady, used as an equestrian sport kind of thing. So it was kind of places where horses can live in cities where there's golf courses, and they, you know, you, you could kind of have that. A little bit of kind of a, kind of a neat play. And, um, and the funnest one I went to was one on robots. I'm maybe the only guy in Emeryville who has his own robot, but, um, it was kind of fun to, 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 uh, talk to somebody who was really excited about my robots, and we're actually gonna be talking about that next week, so it's kind of fun to, kind of fun to be here. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, the chocolate pyramid dessert. Did you guys have that?
I, I missed the lunch. I got there right as they were cleaning up.
Holy cow. It was this, it was about this high, and it was this pyramid chocolate dessert. It was pretty decadent, but it was, it was nice. It was, it was, it was really good.
I also just wanna say thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to go over there. Um, something that I really love about the, the APA conferences that I thought was kind of emphasized with this one, this is my first time going to the national conferences, all the energy that there is at the conference, you know? It's really like, after I leave the APA conference, I always feel inspired, like, yeah, okay, this is why I'm doing this, and, and, you know, you, I kind of feel like I get a boost of energy after, after going to those meetings. Um, but it, I also really appreciate the, um, networking opportunities outside of the sessions. You know, it's a, it's a really good way for me to have, like, meet a bunch of other people that I end up using as resources when I'm doing my own planning work. Um, and I also always end up running into a lot of people that I know from grad school or, you know, were, different, different work environments and stuff like that, so I really appreciated that. Um, uh, I found that I attended a lot of sessions on affordable housing. Um, it was something that I, I'm just really interested in, given our housing crisis here in California, and, you know, our, our homeless situation that we have here in the Bay Area, and, and I think it's kind of city wi, um, statewide as well. Um, uh, the, one that I could, that kind of stood out to me was a session about SP, SB 35 that, um, it's like a streamlining housing projects if you have affordable housing components, um, which I thought was really interesting because it's a, I think a way to deal with some of the NIMBYism that exists here. Um, with, so developers, um, if they meet objective standards, can get ministerial approvals to housing projects if they have a certain percentage of affordable housing in their projects. Um, and I was actually wondering where, uh, Emeryville stands on our objective standards, if that's something that the city is, uh, working on here or will be working on, um, to kind of deal with this SB 35 issue.
The city attorney says I can answer this because it's under the heading of something that's listed on the agenda.
Okay.
Uh, peripherally. Uh, I was, there, there are the, uh, I don't know if you've heard about this, SB 2 planning grants. And in fact, I was just talking to Diana about that this afternoon. Uh, we are intending to apply for an SB 2 planning grant in order to develop objective sta, or actually, not necessarily develop them, but to comb through our general plan zoning ordinance and design guidelines to try to glean out what is already fairly objective and maybe perhaps make it totally objective, and then perhaps embellish it with some, some additional standards that if we are forced to, uh, approve ministerial projects, uh, subject to objective standards, at least we will have some good standards that will result in some, hopefully some good projects. So, uh, we're planning to apply for a grant to, uh, get that work done.
Oh, that's really great to hear. Excellent. Thank you so much. Um, well, I'll, I'll leave it at that, and it just, again, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to go. It was a really interesting, um, conference and-
So before we go off that, I just want, Charlie, I understand you and Diana did a tour of our city for the APA?
Uh, it was me and Maru and Diana and Chad, the four of us. Yes, we did a mobile workshop that went very well. Uh, got good reviews from those who participated. We brought, this was on Monday, uh, midday Monday. We actually started at 8:30 in the morning and ended at 2:30. Um, and I know your husband took a picture of us from your apartment because he showed it to me.
First I heard about it.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So we find things out.
We're walking through the park, you know, and you guys are looking at us. But, uh, yeah, we took, we took them, uh, from the Moscone Center over here on BART, and then Emery Go- Round to City Hall. We gave them a, a presentation, about an hour presentation here in the council chambers. And then we had a chartered Emery Go- Round that drove us around the city, and we walked a little bit. We walked along the Greenway through the Emery Station, uh, campus, had lunch at the public market. Um, city center folks did, uh, show us their model that they just showed you and set aside some tables for us there. Um, and then we walked around the Greenway some more, drove around the city, went out to the marina, went through Bay Street, and then back to BART and got them on BART in time to, to, uh, get back to Moscone in time at 2:30. The only glitch, I would say, is that a few of the participants, we gave them all BART tickets that were good for a round trip, uh, from there to here and back. Uh, a few of the participants had their BART tickets demagnetized while they were walking around Emeryville.
Oh, wow.
It must have put it in their purse or pocket next to- It must have put it in their purse or pocket next to their cellphone or something. I don't know. So we had a little, had to do a little last minute BART emergency logistics. But luckily, we had some sympathetic station agents who let us go through the gates.
That's what happened to my BART ticket. Mine too.
How many participants did you have?
Excuse me?
How many participants did you have?
We had, that one was limited to thirty.
Okay.
I think we actually only had about twenty-eight. I think a couple of people dropped out. I would say, I would also note that I also did a mobile workshop up to Rick Holliday's modular housing factory up in Vallejo. And then we stopped at the intersection project on the way back. We were hoping that the units would be being placed at the time. Unfortunately, they've been a little bit delayed. So he said, well, that's where they're going to go. And so people appreciated that. Maru also did a mobile workshop of cannabis facilities in Emeryville, Berkeley and Oakland. Is that right?
So Versagenix and Kikoko, the two manufacturers that we have in our town, we visited both of them.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, I heard, was the theme rotten city tour or something like that? Or was it?
Yeah.
Ours was called Emeryville Rotten City Transformed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And we gave them the whole history.
So did you go to Townhouse and show them where the police used to run the city or?
Well, we showed them pictures of that in our PowerPoint.
Oh, okay.
We showed them pictures of Earl Warren and, and the federal agents busting the liquor fleet in the Emeryville Police Garage and all that stuff. That was like a hundred years ago.
Yeah, yeah, very cool.
It's not like that anymore.
Yeah.
I would also just like to note that Commissioner Thompson had a presentation at the conference. I'm just looking it up now to see if I can find it.
Zero net energy.
Yes, thank you. Did you go to that?
I did go to it.
Part of it.
Yeah, I, I was able to go to part of it. I had another thing I had to get to. But yeah, that was really interesting about a block in Oakland that's a demonstration project for, hoping to be zero net energy, where every house is, you know, been, well, they, they all have like electric cars and they've, I, I can't recall exactly what they've all done, but they've retrofitted all their houses to be more energy efficient and solar panels and all that kind of thing. The block is actually right next to Emeryville. It's, I forget the name of the streets, parallel streets to San Pablo and Marshall and Fremont or something. But it's one block east-west of San Pablo and immediately north of Powell Street, between Powell and Fifty-Ninth. One block west of San Pablo. So.
So it's on the north side of IA, of I five eighty?
Oh, yeah. It's right off Powell Street.
Oh, cool. Okay.
Yeah. So if you go from the corner of Powell and Hollis towards San Pablo Avenue, it will be on your left one block before you get to San Pablo.
I'll have to go look for that on my bike road one day. That looks interesting.
Right, right on our doorstep. So, so yeah, it was interesting that she, she was actually the moderator of that session.
Very cool. Excellent. All right. Thank you. So we'll move on to our last item here, which is general comments. Does anybody have any general comments? Nope. No general comments over here. All right. The meeting is adjourned.
Very good.